Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda.
Comments, Elizabeth, and I'm going to run out afterwards because there's another meeting across the street on cycling lanes and pedestrian walkways on Williston Road.
Okay.
So I'm going to say something and leave. I want to go somewhere else.
We won't take it personally, Jerry.
Oh, okay. So just, I submitted a couple of questions to the board and I hope they will be answered at some point. That's point number one. Point number two is looking for some clarification. Bridgette, you were interviewed or answered questions from an LE friendship at Vermont Digger. An article appeared on July 29th in that.
Sounds great.
Okay. And in that article, you said there are 925 students in the high school, but it's intended for 850. And as a result, crowding has, quote, "contributed to a higher frequency of behavioral challenges." And this is the first time I've heard of that particular phrase. What are the behavioral challenges?
Pat Burke happens to be here, and that information came from administrators at the high school. There were incidents of fighting last year. There were a number of things that came before the board last year, and we were told during the process that crowding can contribute to those things.
Okay. So just in terms of the numbers crunching I did with the enrollment, and you'll see this, it was my page 14 of the summary enrollment. You don't have to look at it. I'm just telling you where I got the numbers that I'm going to present to you in a minute. Between the academic years 1999 to 2000 and this academic year, which would be a span of 21 academic years, during that period, in 19 of those 21 years, enrollment exceeded 850. And I give you the number 850 as the number where we say above that, we're now in the crowded situation. Okay? I don't know where that numbers come from, but everybody says 850 is the number that the school was geared for in terms of size. Okay, so 19 years, we were in an overcrowded state. Moreover, 16 of the 19 years, the entire overcrowded state could be directly attributed to tuition students. So the point I want to make to the board is, if we are indeed in an overcrowded state for the past two decades, in the vast majority of academic years, when that overcrowded state existed, perhaps leading to behavioral challenges, it was due in large part to the fact that we're taking in tuition students. If we hadn't had those tuition students, we wouldn't have been in an overcrowded state. And the reason I put this out there is because if one of the major reasons for building a new school is to say we're overcrowded, the community needs to understand that a major reason we're overcrowded is because we're taking in tuition students. Now, yes, we get money. But if, as a result of bringing those students in, we're exceeding capacity leading to behavioral changes, you have to sort of say, what's the reason for that? The reason can, in 16 of the 19 years, be directly attributed to bringing in tuition students from outside communities, and the parents of those children are not paying South Burlington City taxes. The second point you make in the article, which I want to just discuss.
Can I just clarify? The state has us calculate what tuition students pay, and they are paying full freight for being here.
Right. But when South Burlington residents pay city taxes, they're expecting those taxes to provide the best education possible for their children. They live in South Burlington. If behavioral challenges exist in the school because we're overcrowded, and the overcrowded can be directly attributed to bringing in students from external communities, that creates an issue for residents of South Burlington. I mean, that's an inescapable conclusion, at least as I see it. We're bringing in students from outside into a school structurally, which was not built to handle an influx of students which exceeds our carrying capacity. That's just the way it is. I don't begrudge students coming from the islands to get a good education here. I'm just trying to address the behavioral challenges.
And you are oversimplifying the issue, I would say, because, yes, overcrowding can contribute, and that was the key word, it can contribute to those issues. There are many other changes, which we've discussed in many other school board meetings, at which you've been present, about the other challenges that we face with behavior that have increased than the number of trauma incidents that students are experiencing in their lives, the other challenges that students are facing. So all of these are part of a bigger, more complicated picture. The tuition students also, although they add numbers, those numbers also add some benefits, not just challenges. So there are classes that we couldn't offer to South Burlington students if we didn't have those students from out of district. There are pros and cons, and we've debated this many, many times with regard to tuition students. It's not as simple as get rid of the tuition students and all of our problems are solved.
I simply bring it up because you linked in this comment overcrowding and behavioral challenges. You directly linked those, and I quoted you in the article of linking the two together.
And have you ever been, have you ever had a quote simplified in a newspaper after you gave it?
I can only comment on what I read. I can't, if I extrapolate and put something into the public domain which isn't in there, I'm guilty of a far greater crime than simply reading and interpreting what's in the article. Okay, so I've made my point. Let's move on. Okay. The second issue in the article, which you're quoted as saying is, you say, with regard to the middle school, people go in and they don't see daylight until the end of the day. So I came early. I walked around the building. Would I like to see more windows in the building? Sure. But there are windows all around this building. It's not like they're in a cave or in a subterranean cavern. There is natural light here. And I also walked around the hallways. The hallways are very bright. There are lots of beautiful diagrams on the hall and everything. I really didn't feel like I was in a cavern when I walked in this building. And the reason I bring it up is because you say, they don't see daylight until the end of the day. It impacts learning and it impacts morale. So I can speak from this from an educator's standpoint. To prove that statement that you just made, it impacts learning, and this is a true statement, some of you are going to think this is just silly for me to say this, but it's not. To really prove this, you'd have to take 100 students who have similar academic abilities, similar backgrounds, socioeconomic, similar demographics, split them into two groups, 50 in one, 50 in other. Keep 50 in this school and 50 in a school with a lot of windows, a lot of daylight, and show that there are different educational outcomes. I doubt that study's ever been done. Now, you think this is a minor point. I have taught students in a classroom without any windows, and I have taught students in classrooms with windows. It makes no difference in terms of learning. If you bring to me a student who wants to learn, who's eager to learn, and has the ability to learn, I will move the world with that student. I don't care if they're windows or not. And I can show you the journals and the comments from students who learn in my classes, and none of them will say, if I only had windows in the class, I would have enjoyed the learning experience more. It's just not a true statement. And there's no study which is going to verify that. So I think what you should say is, I think a building with windows is better for student learning and for morale. That's your opinion. But it's not going to be supported by any objective study I've ever seen, nor do I think you'll ever see that study. That's just my opinion. Let me move to my last point because I know Elizabeth.
Well, you know, Jerry, we're going to take the feedback, as we do with all community members, and continue to validate where we can. And again, you know, because Bridgette was interviewed, it doesn't mean it was her individual opinion. It's really been a lot of folks who work in the environment, who work in the education system, that supported some of those statements. So what I'm hearing from you is, you know, kind of show me, and I'll, we'll take that under advisement.
Yeah, I think, to your point, Jerry, too, I think it's important to note, you know, if you want to level the playing field, I mean, I think you taught at the university level in a very elite, particular program. The students that were in your class were likely there in a very highly motivated environment, probably, maybe not. So again, you'd have to contrast that appropriately, right, to the environment that we have, too, when you look at engagement, right? So I simply just.
As you get lectures here, 10th and 12th grade students.
I know that. I know. But I'm just saying, again, leveling the playing field.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's go on to my last point. So for the board, I'm going to make a statement which is based upon sending emails to Anne Pugh, because I wanted to understand educational funding in the state of Vermont. She then sent the emails along to members of state government in the Education Department. They went back to Anne and then to me, and she removed their names. So this is third-party information. So here it is. The construction cost of this new building will be no different than a teacher's salary in terms of its impact on our budget. And I'll read the statement. Construction costs become part of school spending, okay? And that in turn becomes part of the tax rate, which is reflected in each taxpayer's property taxes. Should I read that again to make sure everybody's on board? See, I'm an educator. I know people don't always get it the first time, even though they shake their heads, yeah, I understand. So I'll read it again, just on your behalf. Construction costs become part of school spending, just like a teacher's salary. And that in turn becomes part of the tax rate, which is reflected in each taxpayer's tax bill, okay? Now, everybody knows about income sensitivity. If you're a resident and you earn less than $141,000, the state will effectively subsidize the amount of taxes you pay in your community. That's what the income sensitivity, it's a subsidy. So let's ask the question. Where do income sensitivity dollars come from? Well, they come from the education budget. And where does the education budget, by the way, which is the number-one-dollar amount of money that Montpelier spends every year, about 33% in FY '20, number-one budget. So where does the money for income sensitivity come from? Well, it comes from all the revenue streams that the state of Vermont accepts to pay all of its bills. So state income taxes, corporate taxes, sales taxes, everything you can think of, that goes into Montpelier. And what comes out of Montpelier includes income sensitivity dollars, which subsidizes taxpayers who are earning less than $141,000. And the reason I'm bringing this up, do you understand the leap I'm going to make, that the decision this community is making to build a new school is going to be funded by every individual in the state of Vermont who pays state income taxes? Because the state's education budget is funded through taxes, and that includes income taxes. So everybody who pays income taxes into the state, that money's going to go into a gigantic budget called the education budget, and from that budget, income sensitivity dollars will leave Montpelier and wind up in places like South Burlington. How much in South Burlington for this year, I learn? Anybody having to take a guess how much income sensitivity dollars we get? Ballpark figure. Good teachers always ask questions, otherwise students go to sleep. So this is going to keep you on your toes. Take a guess, how much? Ballpark. Who's got courage?
All right. Five mil.
Excellent. $5.6 million of income sensitivity dollars, leave Montpelier, and wind up in the pocketbooks of residents of South Burlington. Now, that's a lot of money for people in the rest of the state to send to us. Now, the counterargument to this is, don't South Burlington people who pay taxes send a lot of money to Montpelier? That's a very good counterargument. But most of us who do that, we're sending that money to educate students. I'm not sending that money primarily to build brand-new schools. I'm doing it because I want students to get an education. But the truth is, this is a decision which impacts every taxpayer in the state of Vermont, which, by the way, 73% of residents in the state of Vermont who have earned income pay taxes, 27% don't. It's a big number. And if you expand that to say, residents who have $50 or less of earned income, or no earn, who have $50, who pay $50 of income tax or no income tax, it's one in every three residents in the state of Vermont who pays either $50 in taxes or no taxes. It's a pretty amazing statistic. But anyway, this is a, this is something which is going to impact every resident in the state of Vermont. Now, I'll give you one more set of statistics, and this comes from Tom Pelham. People recognize the name Tom Pelham. Tom Pelham was the, just to make sure I get it correctly, the finance commissioner in the Dean administration and the tax commissioner in the Douglas administration. And in an article in Vermont Digger, I think earlier this year or late last year, he offered these statistics. From 2000 to 2017, a span of 17 years, student enrollment went down 17%, but spending kept going up every year. Retirees and beneficiaries during that span increased by 147%. So when teachers remain in the system, they're paying into retirement funds. When they leave, they're drawing money out of the system. So over that 17-year span, student enrollment went down 70%, retirees and beneficiaries increased 147%. And as more money leaves the pension budget and is not replenished, what happens is something called your unfunded debt obligations increase. That is, the state of Vermont makes a promise to teachers and other employees that we're going to pay your pension, we're going to pay your health care when you retire. As more money leaves the pension fund, and you build up more and more responsibilities, something called unfunded debt responsibilities increase. From Tom's report, between 2000 and 2017, the unfunded debt obligations of the state of Vermont to retirees in terms of just the pension, just the pension, increased by 999.7%, almost a thousand percent increase. And what that means is now, today, the state of Vermont has an unfunded debt obligation to retirees in terms of health care and pensions of $4.5 billion. Now, the US government every day has to borrow $3 billion on global markets just to pay its bills. So how much is $4.5 billion? Not much, except the state budget of Vermont is $6 billion. Now, all of a sudden, $4.5 billion is a big number for $6 billion state. And what this means is, when you think about these large projects, South Burlington is not an island unto itself. You're dumping a lot of money into a very limited education budget of the state of Vermont. It's not like it's just going to impact the residents in the state of Vermont. If 10 communities do what you're doing in South Burlington, or hope to do, it would be a major blow to Montpelier, because if the income of residents in those communities did not increase at a rate which paralleled the cost of the new schools, millions more dollars of income sensitivity would have to leave Montpelier and go into those communities, which would be a serious threat to the budget of Montpelier. And then their choice would be to raise taxes. Big mistake in the state of Vermont to raise taxes, considering it's one of the highest-tax states in the nation. So this decision you're making, and I know you've committed to it, but I want to tell you, excuse me, while I'm going to be a pain in the ass up until the day of the bond, because I don't think this is a good decision for South Burlington or the state of Vermont. And if you ask, who's going to pay the piper when all these bills come due? Probably won't be me. My atoms will probably have been dispersed on planet Earth by the time the piper's come. It's you and the other young people who are graduating from the school system, who are not only going to inherit the debt in Montpelier, but you're going to inherit the federal debt, which is now $22.5 trillion, growing by $1 trillion a year, $12 trillion over the next decade. There are a whole lot of forces coming together, and it's the young people who say you're acting on their behalf who are going to face this financial wrecking ball. And I fear greatly for what's going to happen to these kids. Do I think a new building would be wonderful? Absolutely. Do I think it's a wise, intelligent choice, all things considered? No. Before I came to the meeting, I walked around this building. I looked at it and I said, does this building really have to be demolished? I've done the same thing in the high school. My answer, sorry, is no. And so I apologize. From now until March 20th, I'm going to be a royal pain in the ass, because I don't think this is a good decision. I respect what you do. I know you work hard, but I think it's the wrong decision. Anyway, I'm going to run over to the other meeting. Thanks for listening.
Okay. Any other comments from the public not on the agenda? All right. Any amendments to the agenda, David?
No.
All right. Announcements and student rep report. Cole.
All right. So tomorrow, October 3rd, at South Burlington, at the high school, will be picture retake day. Next week is homecoming week, and the homecoming parade will be at 4:15 PM, and that will take place on Kennedy Drive. Next Saturday, October 12th, is the Cannon 5K Walk and Run. Next Wednesday, October 19th, freshmen and their slam leaders will be taking part of Freshmen Community Service Day. All classes will begin again at 1:00 PM. The sophomores and juniors are taking the PSAT and pre-ACT. At the middle school, a naturalization ceremony will be occurring next Thursday, October 10th. The South Burlington High School chamber singers and middle school choruses will be singing at the naturalization. At Chamberlain and Rick Marcott, their open houses will be next Thursday, October 10th, at 6:00 PM at both schools separately. And at Orchard, the PTO Fun Run is next Friday, October 11th, at 9:00 AM. And also at Orchard, students today participated in International Walk to School Day. At the district level, there will be a late start or early release October 11th, which is next Friday. And a blood drive to support Kathy Bulea, a teacher at Chamberlain, happened yesterday at Chamberlain.
Other announcements?
And then for junior.
Sorry, Cole.
Sorry. For the junior class representative, I believe, and the candidates.
Yeah, that's my update to give.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I'm happy to give that update. So Brian and I are the subcommittee that have been interviewing applicants for the junior class representative. We had two applicants for that role this year. We just finished our second interview this evening. And so we basically need to report back to the rest of the board and to talk to Cole, because that's usually part of the process, is to talk to the senior class representative as well. And then we'll be making a recommendation about which of those applicants to choose. And so hopefully, we'll have an announcement about that at our next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, and to whatever degree you beat the bushes or found people, they were both great. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, will the next, will the junior rep possibly be here for the next school board meeting, or would that?
Yes. I think that was the plan, is that we would sort of have those conversations offline. Like, we would, Brian and I would reach out to you and have that conversation ahead of time, and then we would inform, well, we would just double-check with the rest of the board that that was an okay recommendation, and then we would reach out to that person before the next board meeting and make sure that they were here. Yeah.
All right. Awesome.
Yeah, this would not be a board action. We'll look for the subcommittee's recommendations, so hopefully we could get that individual in attendance. Good. Okay. Oh, yes, just for the public, Martin is participating by phone.
That's why he's here, next to the phone.
I did have a couple, oh, do you have announcements as well?
Nope.
One, the city has asked that we announce that there are going to be two forum on Thursday, October 10th, and Wednesday, October 30th, at the Tuttle Middle School Cafeteria on domestic violence. And this is in recognition of one of our community members, Annette Lumumba, who was murdered. And this is really an effort, from a public safety standpoint, to acknowledge the threat of domestic violence and also to provide some education. There's a number of guest speakers. So I don't know if we have extra flyers, but the city has posted these, and we'd certainly like to encourage board attendance, student attendance, and interested parties to attend one of those two sessions at least. The other note I had that David, you and I hadn't talked about, but the Vermont School Board's annual meeting is being held November 8th in Lake Maury, and typically, we need to get people registered for that. I would like to get registered to line. I'll give you a heads-up on that. I don't know who else will be attending, but if you could make a note of that, and we could get you registered for that. The board will need to designate somebody with the proxy to vote on our district's behalf on the various motions that are being made. There is one, there's a regional meeting in Winuski that covers our district. I don't have the date handy. It's within the next couple of weeks. But there will, there's a presentation that VSBA is making about consolidating districts based on a number of variables, but notably, number of students and some other governance. And one of the recommendations I noted to David is that Grand Isle is separate and is linked with Franklin County right now. And I wondered if that is something that we might want to give some feedback to the VSBA on that configuration, because we do have so many students who attend our district here. So the regional meeting, we'll get a date out on that in terms of who might be able to participate. And then the annual meeting, again, November 8th in Lake Maury and Fairleigh.
And can I ask, did they change format? Because it seems less like a conference and more like an annual meeting, or am I missing something? Because I, maybe things are going into my spam folder or something, but usually there's a big sort of push to get people to sign up to go to a two-day, you know, sort of event. And it sounded more like, here's our annual meeting, and please attend.
You know what I don't know, actually?
I haven't looked at the agenda, really.
I haven't seen if it's.
I don't think it's, I mean, I think there's still opportunity to gain, you know, it's a kind of a professional development.
Right.
Well, there's a keynote speaker, I know, but I have not seen a full agenda that you're referencing, too. Usually, it's about a day and a half event with a series of workshops that you can sign up for.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, every year, there's a little bit of change and, you know, but it still follows like the keynote speaker, and then some choices that people can go to.
And that, by the way, is held in concert with the Superintendent's Association, correct, VSA?
Yeah, it's a joint.
Any other announcements? All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 6, which is consider ratification of the agreement between the South Burlington School District and the South Burlington Educators Association. And this is warn for action. And I'll ask Bridgette maybe to provide a summary.
Sure. So we, we had mediation last Tuesday with the SBEA and came to a tentative agreement. The terms of that tentative agreement, which, by the way, was ratified, I understand, last week by the SBEA at one of their meetings. So it's a one-year contract, which would end June 30th of 2020. That was necessary, actually. The state mandated that all contracts end then because of the statewide health care negotiation that's going on. The terms, in terms of salary, are 3% new money to salaries, 1.44% to pay for teachers who are moving up a step, and then the balance would go to a base increase. Step 18 on the salary grid, step 18 of the Masters plus 30 column was eliminated, so there are only 17 steps in that column now. The multiplier on that top step versus the base salary has decreased from 2.015 in the previous year to 2.004. The new starting salary is $46,539, and the top salary is $93,265. Health care would be status quo with what it is now, which means that there would be an 80/20 premium share. So 80%, the district pays, 20% teachers pay, with out-of-pocket costs of $400 for a single plan, ranging up to $1,000 for a family plan. And that would be first dollar from the employee toward out-of-pocket costs, and the district would pay the balance. Future local negotiations with a TPA would include efforts to include secured, or to secure debit cards to pay health care expenses and direct pay to provider, if that is something that whichever TPA we choose can do. And we would look for a TPA who could do that if there are future negotiations on that. Then there, with regard to workday, a study committee will be appointed to review the scheduling of the workday at all levels, elementary, middle school, high school. There were eight common factors identified by the Fact Finder, who wrote the fact-finding report, that were sort of common factors between the SBEA's proposal and our proposal. And that study committee would meet and then would make recommendations for the next contract negotiation. A working group would also be formed to establish how to transition the school psychologists, who are currently not part of the bargaining unit, into the SBEA bargaining unit. Nursing teachers would be provided a 30-minute break to express milk, up from 15 minutes in the previous contract. Those teachers receiving an annual award for national teacher certification will be grandfathered. They'll keep receiving that annual award. But future teachers who choose to go get a national teacher certification will receive a one-time award of $1,500. And then there were some modest changes in the grievance procedures and in Family Medical Leave Act language. The FMLA language was sort of required changes by law, and those were agreed upon. So those are kind of the summary bullet points. And I guess I'll turn it back to you. I guess we had said that, yeah.
Yeah. Can, do I have a motion to approve or to ratify the agreement based on the terms that Bridgette just outlined?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Do we have discussion? Martin, I'll start with you on the phone. Any questions or comments?
Nothing for me. I'm in support of, I think it's a very good agreement. It's taken a long time to get there. But I think it is a good compromise position for the district and the teachers.
Brian?
Yeah, I'll say for myself that I'm pleased with the outcome. I know that I don't know all the history. I'm the new guy on the board. I'm sure we'll be butting heads again in the future. But I think it's wonderful that it happened as quickly as it did. I'm glad it happened at the end as amicably as it did. And, yeah. And, yeah, I hope it sets a tone for, for future negotiations. I'm pleased to support it.
Alex?
Yeah, sure. Having been through two negotiation cycles, I've, I've seen a little bit of what goes on, and I gotta say, I was pretty disappointed with some of the tone and some of the rhetoric that came out, and in particular from the S B E A. I think in the last negotiation cycle about two years ago, we proposed putting dollars on the salary grid in order to compensate our more junior teachers at a more favorable amount than our more senior teachers. And, and by the way, our, our senior teachers are very highly paid. We have, I think, 85 or something of the highest-paid teachers in Vermont. They all, they all teach in South Burlington. And the, the response that we got from the S B A when we did that was that we had obliterated the salary grid. And, and I don't know, was that, was that a quote from, directly from you, Noah, or was that from somebody else in the, in the union?
It's, we can't, it's not really.
We're not having a discussion, yeah.
Okay, but I, I was pretty disappointed that, you know, the, you know, this board is made up of parents mostly. Four out of five of us have parents, have kids in the school system. And we get treated in what I feel is pretty unprofessionally and pretty disrespectfully by the union when it comes to negotiating a teacher contract. I was also pretty disappointed that the negotiations dragged on as long as they did. I think we started in, what, March or even sooner? And it, it came down to, we had to go to a fact finder's report, we had to declare impasse. And prior to those times, I think the salary request from the S B E A was somewhere at the, at the very lowest, it got down to about 4%. And, and I don't know of any other employer that would just apply a base salary increase of 4% to their entire workforce, or at least the majority of their workforce. So I think, I think that, I'm concerned that the foot dragging was intentional, and I didn't like it. I think that, you know, we serve the school district out of a concern for the people around us, not just the kids, not just the taxpayers, but the teachers as well. And I think it was unprofessional, it was disrespectful, it was unnecessary. And it also creates a tremendous amount of anxiety within the community. Because when it gets to the point where school has already started and there's not a contract, we are forced to have to declare, not just, to, to impose a contract, because the negotiations are going nowhere. Now, we, we can't just offer 4% salary raise, there's just no room in the budget for it. So we can't do that. We have to impose a contract, and what we impose is our last best offer. And I think if anybody wants to take a look at the offers that the board made to the S B E A throughout this negotiation cycle, you'd be hard-pressed to find someone that says that our offer was unreasonable. So I'm, I'm, I just, generally, I'm, I'm disappointed at the tone that I've received from people who are responsible for my kids and, and spend more time in their day than I do, actually. I, I think there's better out there. So as, as far as the contract goes, I think it was pretty hastily settled upon once the fact finder's report came out. I'm glad that the S B E A ultimately went to, to accept it. But I think, I think the history of it has really left a sour taste in my mouth. And I'm, I'm disappointed. I, I did not expect this when I joined the board two and a half years ago, and, and I've, I gotta say, I'm taken by surprise. Thank you.
Bridget?
As a member of the negotiations subcommittee, really for the first time, because last time I was not a member of that committee, you know, negotiations are challenging, they're hard. And I think because both sides really care about what they're fighting for. And, yes, there were challenges in this negotiation, but I did see some bright spots and, and some changes in tone in a couple of places that really encouraged me for the next round of negotiations, which unfortunately, because we're so delayed, will have to start pretty soon. But I think in the end, I think we, I think we did, you know, represent our, our goals and our, you know, what we were fighting for very fairly. And, yeah, it's always hard, and I think we got to a good place in the end. And, and I base that based on, you know, where other settlements in, in the county came in, I think we came in, in a good place. And I do think at the end, the S B A made some, some pretty big concessions to move closer to a position that we could get to ourselves. And, and I think, I think it sets us in a good place to move forward to the next negotiation. So, so, yeah.
Elizabeth, may I just add on? I, I do want to say thank you to Bridget and you for spending many, many hours negotiating with the, with the union on this. I, you know, every week, or every, every board meeting, we get the minutes, and, you know, you are there, meeting sometimes all day long on a Monday, in a negotiating session. And it makes me feel a little guilty that I come here on Wednesday nights, and this is my meeting, but, but also that you are, are spending tremendous hours and are very dedicated, and, and thank you for all the time that you've put into this.
Welcome. All right, yeah, I'd like to just preface my comments before we take action to say that I, I am going to vote against ratification of this agreement. This is the first time in 15 years that I have had to make this tough decision, and I don't do it lightly. Some of the challenge to me are largely process-related, but there are fewer months left in the contract than we have spent negotiating the contract, and I feel like that was unnecessary. There were a number of efforts that the board made early on that I think could have contributed to expediting a settlement prior to the start of the school year, which was a stated and explicit and transparent goal of the board, and those were not accepted. I don't think they would have impacted the outcome at all of the negotiations, but I do have a concern just around the timeliness of this and the fact that there are fewer months left, again, in the contract than we've spent trying to, trying to get to a settlement. The process around collective bargaining is dictated by state statute, and it, we've leveraged any, any numbers of those, of those steps in that process. We had two mediations, we went to fact finding, and we did reach a settlement. And generally speaking, I think the terms of that settlement are fair, but if I look honestly at what the boards stated and explicit goals were in this round of negotiations, both parties went into this knowing it was going to be a one-year contract, and the union came in with 22 different articles to negotiate, and that, I believe that was an unrealistic start, kickoff to the negotiations. But that said, I believe that acceptance of the fact finding recommendations, although I think neither party accomplished as much as it would have liked to, I do think it's fair and reasonable. I, I think it's, the process itself really needs to be more expeditious, and, and some of that is really adhering to the current contract, which really states that if we can't reach an agreement by June 30th and have to go to fact finding, there should be a fact finding report issued by that timeframe. And even though that's considered by statute a step that nobody likes to get to, it is written into our current contract, and adherence to that guideline, I think, is important to reach, to, to at least attempt to get a settlement prior to the start of a school year. Again, some of the board's objectives, notably trying to reach a settlement prior to the start of the school year, was not achieved. There was an effort to at least identify a mediator or fact finder earlier in the process, so we had somebody lined up. That process, fact finding, was delayed by over two months as a result of some of that lack of identification of a resource. I know there was an encouragement to release initial proposals to the public, really for the sake of transparency, so there was community awareness of what issues were critical to both parties as we entered negotiations. Again, I have a great deal of respect for our teachers, for union leadership. I think we're in a position to set a different tone going forward, and, and I hope that will happen. And I just, on, on a moving forward basis, I think a sense of urgency and I think practicality around what we can accomplish and what priorities parties share is critical to this process. I think the, this board wants to be supportive, and I also believe our teachers want the best for our students and for our community, and I think that's the tone set on a going-forward basis. So we have a motion, and we have a second?
And we need to do a roll call vote, because Martin's on the phone.
All right, so why don't I do a roll call vote? And the motion is to ratify the agreement between the school district and the S B E A. Martin, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Okay. Brian?
Also, yes.
Bridget?
Aye.
Alex?
No.
And I will vote no. And the motion passes. All right, thank you all for the hard work. All right, moving on. Agenda Item Seven, City-School Collaboration.
So we're a little bit behind. Some of this will actually walk into Rick Marcot update as well, or 180 Market. But City-School Collaboration, Elizabeth and I met with Kevin and Helen on the 27th of September, not that long ago. We met from 10:30, 11:30, kind of our standing meeting times. And a few things that came out of that is we're trying to find a steering committee meeting time. Some dates that have been identified and will circulate, Delana will assist me in trying to figure out what days work for you. But right now on the chart is October 22nd, 23rd, or 24th, for what we're calling a steering committee meeting that would be at the high school for the purposes of providing, getting a brief overview of MPV, and having a tour in the high school. Again, we think that's really important, we heard that from the city, so that's, that's one. The second was to find a steering committee time somewhere in around, in and around November 5th, and again, we'll send this out, or the 12th, with the first hour being specific to topics, specific to the steering committee interest. And then the second hour would be with our legislators, meeting to talk about items that have importance in that regard. We brainstormed a couple of those, could be statewide healthcare, school construction, a little bit of us in there, of course, tax increment financing, and I can't remember what Kevin alluded to, local control regarding a rule, chapter change, I forget the word that, there was a particular.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Dylan's or whatever, I forget. The other update around, so again, we'll be pushing out these dates and seeing if we can get some, some buy-in, obviously Patrick's in a big part of that for the October 22nd, 23rd, or 24th. In addition, we got an update on Market Street. The city expects to close on 180 Market Street. Again, it's not, they've not made official agreements, again, with South Burlington Realty LLC, I think that's the right. So they expect to close here very shortly or within the next two weeks on the property, again, 180 Market. I don't know, feel free to interrupt if you have others, but, and then city asked that we would share the domestic violence, Elizabeth already did. And then we got into talking a little bit about budget schedule and budget kind of mapping out our collaborative schedules, how we can make that work. We do know that the January timeframe, we need to be really sensitive to, because that's very, very close to the due date, and we need to make sure that there's clarity around what our budget being approved and then being, having, having a steering committee meeting on or before. Those are the big items, and I'll talk in a bit about the streetscape conversation about the front of Rick Marcot, and just a bit, Gary will, will join me in that. I don't know, did I miss anything?
The only other note I had, actually, two notes, is one, storm water permits are expected soon. And lastly, there is going to be an effort to set up a legislative breakfast meeting and link it with a steering committee meeting, or a legislative meeting, I should say. We might not do a breakfast, we might do something in the evening and link it with a steering committee meeting to cover some of the topics that David mentioned. I'm sorry if I repeated.
No, that's good, perfect.
That's it.
I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of that? Hearing none?
Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So Gary's gonna assist me in giving you some quick updates. Rick Marcot Central School and 180. First, Rick Marcot, just to the north of the school, which is Williston Road, and you have a streetscape map in front of you. Gary and I, and who else joined us?
Justin, Delana, and Paul.
Yeah, so it was he and I on the school side, and what you have in front of you is, if you orient it where you can read, read the actual title of the, the school is on the southern portion of the paper, Williston Road, obviously on the north, so it's north and south oriented. And what you see here is that they're proposing to push into the, into the property owners southbound by about 17 feet to open up additional bikeways, walkways for increased traffic. So again, that's, that's essentially a proposal. You'll know that there are some places where it dips back in, because there's current building structures that are there that would inhibit that to happen. I don't know, Gary, add, add on, there's other feedback?
It's part of a, a bigger project estimated to happen in about two years from now, that will add this bikeway, walkway, and green space in every available section in South Burlington's portion of Williston Road, all the way to Williston. So we, we just had an initial discussion with that group, you know, they presented their planning factors and provided us this, this proposal. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of discussion about potential concerns, safety and security.
Land.
Space, the actual 17 feet of, of potential property. And, and really, it was just an update to make sure that we were, were up to date with where they were in the process, gives us an estimate of their timeline and their overall vision for, for the project.
So there's, as, as you heard from Jerry, he was headed to the meeting, we were invited to the meeting, too. There were, again, we, Gary and I had a, a separate meeting with them. Those are going to continue, they're in this information gathering. I, I did say that I, you know, again, I don't know all of the, the rules and what the outcomes are there, but I did say that, you know, the land, as Gary said, was, was a concern. You know, we've already, we're concerned about the, the amount of property, we're concerned about safety and security, the straight line, or straight visual access to, to our classrooms, we're concerned about barrier, you know? Right now, we have a fence that's, that has worked well, but it's, again, there's some space there, this would make that closer. How would we work to guarantee in this age where we're trying to really make sure about safety and security? So that was brought up. B R M conversation came up around how maybe, that might, again, we, we kind of brought that up. I did say that, you know, I did share that I felt like, I understand the desired outcome of the achievement is to do this, but, you know, you know, the, the reducing down seems like it's not getting to the goal, and could we wait so that when, you know, the full expansion went, could we go when, when that happened? And that was, you know, responded to, that wasn't what they were, that's not what they're looking for. Again, we were just asking questions, there wasn't hard answers, and I said, you know, I think you're pretty aware that this is a very public process for the school board, we've been through this before, and we're gonna have to make sure that, you know, due diligence and questions are being, being asked, and that's kind of how we left it. So that's the streetscape conversation, and they did say.
Is, is that the working group that's meeting tonight? Is it called Streetscape?
It's, this is, this was what we were given, and this is actually off, it's the Williston Road Streetscape, I mean, so I don't know, that's what's kind of been posted up. This is, again, what Gary and I were given, in addition to the, a map. Actually, we asked for the, for the map, and what you've got here is a photocopy, reduced down.
No, it's just an excerpt.
Oh, it is, okay. So there's a little bit more in here, too, and I can put this, make this available to board members, but a little bit more on the streetscape idea. You get a little bit more of the Williston Road Exchange and the corridor that they're trying to. trying to do there. And again, a lot of the corridor is centered around, you know, this, the Market Street, that whole circulation, I believe, from what I'm hearing. So that's, that's that.
Rest of the update on the, on the Market Street project is it, it looks like the contractor is generally on schedule. It looks like still target date of November 15th completion. A couple of minor disturbances for heavy work periods coming up. One, they're gonna finish the curbing on Friday. They don't expect a real big impact. And then they will be top coating Market Street probably about two weeks from now. Probably the week after Columbus Day is what it sounded like from the meeting on Tuesday.
Which is ahead of schedule because initially it published that it was gonna be around that first week of November, right? That that would open the entire road?
November 15th, there.
Is still on target.
Is the project completion date for, for opening Market Street is my understanding.
Good. Any questions on, on that? A lot going on there with Streetscape and keep you posted.
I mean, I got lots of questions on the Williston Road stuff, but maybe this is not the time to get into the weeds and we're gonna hear more? I don't know.
I think if you have questions, it would, it would be great. I think whichever, obviously if this is the best time for you, Brian, fine. If not, you know, email both myself and Gary and we're gonna continue to kind of share. Again, they, they knew that we were gonna share with the board tonight, so I might think they'd.
I'd go ahead and bring them up at this point.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, anytime is fine, but so broadly, the idea of having a place where parents and kids can walk or bike to school is terrific, but if you're looking at a cost benefit, I mean, it looks like just to the east of our property, it kind of bumps back in, you know, what happens when it gets skinnier again? Does that biking and pedestrian space just get tossed back into the road, kind of? You know what I mean? Like, does it get fatter and thinner and fatter and thinner? And what does that achieve then?
It looks to me, by looking at the plans, and we didn't, we didn't get into a lot of detail in this initial meeting, but it looks like there is, it narrows down to just a sidewalk and a bike path. I guess you might say similar to what is in front of the high school on Dorset Street.
Yeah, okay.
Where there's a paved bike path and a sidewalk side by side. The center portion of the, their, let's call it their vision design, right, has a, has a green space in the center between the bike path that segregates the sidewalk from the bike path.
Okay.
So they're trying to keep that kind of all the way through. Again, there's, you know, some added spaces here to give. So going from the street, Gary, do you remember now what all of the different bands are directly in front of it? The six-foot, six-foot, 10-foot pieces? I mean, I don't quite, I know it was bike lane, it was.
Bike lane.
Walking pedestrian.
Is part of the 10-foot. The six-foot was a green space.
And then.
The sidewalk was.
Walking, right.
The nearest to the school.
For walking.
For walking.
Yeah.
How many of us, maybe you said this earlier and I missed it. How many of those feet are on what's now school district property? And how much of it is, is the city's property? Because I know, for example, my front yard, like the last few feet of it technically are city property, we maintain it, but it's technically theirs and they can.
Property lines are denoted on this, you know, but what we, what we measured at the meeting, because we asked the question, 17 feet.
So it's 17 feet.
Of our property. I don't know exactly which line it measures from.
So if you, it's really in the, where it says 10 feet, that center line is, is what, what I took as the property, the current property line.
Think you can see kind of the circles over, like on the very eastern side, there's a circle with some lines.
Just like seven feet from our fence right now. Seven feet north of our current fence, which is depicted in the light X-line, X-line.
Okay, so the current fence is the, the light one?
That's our current fence, which, which would be, would be moved nine to 10 feet.
To the dark X? Is it where the dark X is now? Is that where the?
Dark X is, correct.
Okay.
Does the district pay for the new fence or would the city do that for replacing the fence?
That's a good question, but we would, we would, we would not want the district to incur those costs. But we're really, really early in the phase right now. It's, they're in the questions and phase call, so we're just trying to understand the project and what would be the, and also make sure it's, has some significant benefits to the, to the students, particularly, and with an eye on safety and security.
Well, just having been a student at Central, I know that, that unless things have changed, the entrance to Williston Road is always fenced off. And so unless that would change, then in terms of like walking pedestrian traffic, I don't know how it would, how much it would affect the students at Central.
Right.
And what we understood from, oh, Principal Brent Coon was actually in the meeting as well.
Yes, that's it.
That is largely, and you might be able to weigh in too, Cole, that portion to the north of the school is largely unused. It's really not used at all by students.
Yep. And that's a good point to bring up, the curb cut currently is larger than what they're proposing. They would reduce that curb cut down. Now, at the very top where you, where you come in off of Williston Road, which Cole was saying was fenced off, their proposal is to, right now, that curb cut is larger than what we have for the gate opening, and they would, they would want to be reducing that. Obviously, it still has to be big enough for, you know, emergency vehicles and, yeah, that type of stuff.
From a, from a student access kind of commuting to school, I know we're encouraging pedestrian and bike traffic. Would there be an expectation this would become a primary? I think you're shaking.
David and I, David and I voiced our concern that, that that might not be something that would be looked favorably by the school district.
Yeah, I've, I've not seen anything that would use the Williston Road corridor as a primary. It would really direct, want to direct kids to less trafficked areas, but.
Because most of the communities that are either east or west can use, you know, avenues of coming into the school that are, whether it's Mary Street, you know, and again, there's some new developments.
Garden Street will help with that.
Garden Street. So I don't, I don't, again, I'm not sure of the value add at the, at the present time, so we'll have to continue to weigh in and watch how that goes. Any other questions, Brian?
Is, just out of curiosity, is that, that overpass idea part of this at all?
I think it's a separate project, but it's, it's related and tied in.
It would be tied in.
Yeah, so it's, and again, I'm sorry that I didn't print this off, but there's, there's conversation, Elizabeth's looking at it, but there's a bridge proposed to go over the 189 intersection. I'm not exactly sure where, but I understood it to kind of be here to be able to tie into.
From the south near the Staples House.
Yeah, right.
So that's, that's west over then?
Most south of the overpass.
Yeah, to give the availability of traffic movement to continue that way. But it's sep, as Gary said, it's separate, but it was mentioned, and it would all be done through federal funds, is that right? Through federal transportation funds, I think.
Through grant.
Grant, is what we heard at the meeting.
Well, and so setting aside safety concerns for the moment about having one or two entrances and whether people could enter from the north like that, I'm sure I should know what the district looks like, but I don't. How many students for Central come from across Williston Road or how many, you know, what does that look like?
Uh, zero.
Well, I'm not sure. We may have, there's maybe a couple of exceptions in there.
Maybe an exception or two, but it's primarily a Chamberlain.
East Terrace goes to Orchard.
Yeah.
If you live on East Terrace, you go to Orchard.
Yeah.
We do not have kids cross, you know, at the elementary level particularly, we don't have them crossing those busy roads. You know, high school students obviously are coming across Dorset, you know, and obviously a lot of them are driving too, so.
So benefit to Central students in their personal lives may be some, but benefit to them coming to the school, nil, really.
Very much.
Yeah, okay.
At the, at the present time, we don't see it.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, we're gonna keep watching and listening. Thanks. So Chamberlain noise mitigation, I, I just wanted to, and I'm just gonna give you this quick thing. So we're, we're continuing to wait for some feedback from, sorry. So this is just some correspondence, you know, from me to Nick. And Gary's been a part of this too. We're paying attention to the, to the grant and obviously we're continuing to see that things are, you know, it sounds like it's moving. We're still in wait for this 10% match conversation. And so this is just some recent email, actually one back in September 18th, references a letter that, that we sent, asking specifically about, you know, kind of holding us to the 10% piece. And it's not yet been responded to, so we're pushing that. Again, I sent another email this afternoon actually on the status of where we are and if I should be talking to somebody else. But it's pretty hard for us to be able to assume an amount of money that we have no idea what that is and that it just doesn't seem right. And so we're hopeful to get a response back. Again, there's been some positive exchanges and helpfulness from them. We're just hopeful that we'll get, we'll get a more immediate response so we can appropriately plan. That's.
This, this did come up at the city meeting as well, and the prior, I think it was the prior buyout of homes, that any 10% matching was actually funded at the, out of the grant, correct? That's, that's what I understood from Kevin and Helen. So the city is supportive of the 10% being funded from the previous sources it had been funded from, for what it's worth.
Again, F-35s, we had the first takeoff, well, we had a landing obviously because two of them came in. We had the first takeoff yesterday, right, Gary? And so we'll also, we're gonna, we're paying attention, I think there were the typical takeoff times around the eight and one or something like that, eight and a little after one.
It was nine and 1:45 yesterday, but I don't know if those will be typical times. We did get feedback from, from the principal at Chamberlain, who was in a classroom and didn't hear the planes when they came in. I was actually at Chamberlain and outside, I'm looking at a construction project and certainly heard them come in, but in a classroom, Holly did not. I didn't get any feedback from anybody about the training flights yesterday from a noise perspective.
So we'll keep you posted on that. Again, just an update on where we are and I'm gonna keep that on there. There was a question, is that, are we good to move on? Yeah, there was a question that came up and because you folks are often on email exchanges, you probably got like, the internet's gonna be down, you know, you had a series of those going on. Very frustrating to our IT people, but it was, it's about our, our internet service provider who has our firewall assessed. And we went through this iteration of having to, you know, they wanted to come in and check it. And so as a result, have kept, they've asked us more than once to try to do this. We're pretty much at end right now with it. But that was the, the purpose. It wasn't anything horrific going on. It was about really assessing firewall strength and making some upgrades to it. We really questioned the number of times that it needed to happen and we're, we're sensitive to that. Because again, they've been really good about, our guys, again, uptime. Good. And then last but not least, again, big packet and apologize for the delay related to enrollment. And so in your packet is enrollment information. I'm happy to answer questions. I, I could go through, but I think in the spirit of you getting it, you may have questions specific for me. So we did a little bit more of a look back on the, on the enrollment. It did take some time because we have some students that we initially did not pick up in the category that we should. So you have a new copy by your place now. While I look for my copy, I'd be happy to answer questions.
I mean, I guess one is redistricting happened 20 years ago because Orchard was too full, right? But it looks like that was close to 500 and the projection for Orchard is not to exceed 435.
Yeah, point me to the page you're on. So there's two reports.
I'm looking at a few different things, yeah.
Yeah, no problem. There's two reports. There was one that was in a full enrollment summary and then there was an attempt for us to just kind of give some clarity to how the demographic projections are going. Again, we don't have a huge number of years with McGivern, but we felt that was important. So those are the two different reports. So you're referring, I think, to the, the larger packet report, the summary one?
A couple of them.
And just give me a page.
Yeah, so there's something from John Katz.
Yep. So John Katz works for us, he's helping to, again, he's, Ray Mann used to be in that position, he's kind of our data analyzer person.
Okay. And there, I'm on page 11.
Okay. They're both from John, by the way, so.
And that just shows the historical and, you know, the peak that was hit in.
That's right.
98, 99.
That's when we redistrict and.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep, and so you'll see those changes. That's when they were up at higher numbers and that was no easy process for people that were in the district at the time.
Well, yeah.
It was, it was, it was, again, painful, I'm sure, for people that were in.
Well, and there's a second shorter, John Katz, and I'm on page five of that one, where it shows the predictions going out into the future.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like the highest that Orchard would hit according to this is 435. And so I assume the question I'm gonna ask is obvious, but, you know, if we're gonna spend all this money on middle schools and high schools, we're pretty confident that we can keep fitting all of our kids in the elementary schools that we want to, right? And it looks like the answer is yes.
I think the answer of fitting is probably the correct terminology, you know?
Fair enough.
I think we are going to have some challenges in certain places and I think with new developments coming onboard, we're gonna have to be smart about perhaps repointing those, those developments in maybe, again, before they get occupied and students coming to the, to school, then I think it's gonna be an important look. And we're, we're currently doing that. Actually, the McGivern report did look at some of those developments that are currently approved. And if we redirected what that would do to the, kind of the demographic projections for those particular schools. So we're, we're working on looking at that because as I said, as so noted, it is not an easy process to redistrict and say.
I gather it was painful, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, and it's, and again, it's, it's not that, it's just for children. It's very, very emotional for, you know, kids and obviously families to do that.
So, but the idea then is instead of redistricting, you would point sort of new developments where there's capacity?
That's currently what the conversation is now. There's a fair amount of development, both that's been approved but not yet occupied and there's others that are on the books to, to, to happen, but haven't been actually, you know.
Not permitted.
Permitted yet. So we don't, so I don't know, but that's, that's the approach we're taking at the present time as we look at elementary enrollment.
And so best guess is don't need to redistrict, don't need more elementary capacity, just need to plan it out, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't know, again, if everything goes forward with new construction, you know, a new facility, you know, we've asked that question, like what would be the resulting enrollment possible projections if something new comes on? That may change, you know, enrollment projections at the elementary, you know, and middle and high school. And we'd have to obviously, you know, be sensitive to how we could accommodate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my question on the Orchard one was.
What page are you on?
Still the same page, so 11 or 10, you know, so we're, really don't need a page in front of you. I guess my question was, it looked like peak enrollment at Orchard at one time was 496 students. And my question is, you know, none of our capacity analyses, when Jon Stewart was really, you know, taking a deep dive on those, alluded to the idea that that was even a possible capacity at Orchard. And I wondered if that was just because of changes in the way that we're educating students now or numbers of preschoolers? Because I know, I don't know when preschool came online at Orchard and potentially special education students and the needs of, you know, having spaces to, to do occupational therapy and, you know, some of the other things that, that need to be done now. I just didn't, I guess my concern is it, it's not as simple to me as just sort of saying, oh, we don't need more capacity, we should be good. It's more, it's, it's on the borderline, you know, really for me with Orchard and potentially, you know, if, if we do see more developments come online or we have a bump in families moving into the district because of the middle school and high school, these are long lead times that we're talking about. And so, you know, what in your mind is the enrollment that kind of gets us to the point where we really do start to have to reinvigorate that conversation? You know, I know we have a book that we had prepared when we were really focusing more on the elementaries and we'd said we'd kind of look at that and say, you know, what are the guardrails and, and what are the sort of, you know, alerts that alert us early enough in the process to start to slowly steer the big ship to make sure that, you know, if redistricting has to happen or if capacity has to be added somewhere, how we do that?
Yeah, you know.
So it was a very reambling question, I'm very sorry.
Part of your question, the 496, where were they? Again, we had recently added project rooms that were for the purposes of projects, but they quickly became eaten up to be classrooms. And we've continued that trend certainly at Orchard.
And it was also like a. And it was also like a 70-child bump in one year.
Yeah.
Do we know what happened? Like, what was the, do we know?
I honestly don't know what was going on. I just know that there was, I think, I'm not sure. I think transitional housing, you know, was happening. People were, this, it happened that way. I was in the district. I wasn't working here, but I was, you know, living here. My kids were in the system, and they actually were at Orchard, so. So, yep, numbers pretty close. We currently, yes, we have preschool. We'd have to be strategic in what we would do, you know, on a going-forward basis. The, the hard thing is having three pre-K to five schools. The balancing, the, the rebalancing is not as easy. So there are things that we can do, you know, voluntarily first, hopefully, repointing, repointing developments that are not yet online, or before kids come into the system, I think is, is an important piece. And to, again, just continue to watch how that enrollment fluctuations are going. It may be, although unpopular, it may be that we need to look at a different preschool location, you know, to serve, again, we've got a increasing number of students, and that's a wonderful thing. We love it. But it may be, you know, we've gotta, we gotta be watchful of all of those pieces, you know. So...
All right. Just one quick question, David. Is, I heard a story that the teacher's lounge at Orchard has been converted into a classroom. Is that true, or is that not?
Teacher's lounge, I'm not, I don't, I think they, they shifted a space, but they still have, they still have a lounge, or...
Okay.
Probably smaller, actually. I don't, can envision where that moved. I can check with you, though, on that.
Okay.
But there are spaces. Again, we have schools' out offices in there. It's a shared conference room space that you have to walk through in order to get into the school's out office. So there's some real constriction going on, no question.
Yeah.
So. And you've heard the enrollment, five kindergarten classrooms.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think one thing I noted is that the demographic projections for the period of time where there's a comparison of actual to the projection, generally speaking, they're pretty close. There's a couple that were...
You're on the McGivern stuff?
Yeah, the McGivern work. There were a couple that were decreases, but for the most part, it's more off by some increases. So I think one, the, the notion of looking at master planning and visioning, that sort of looks at relative stability, if not some upticks in enrollment, is pretty consistent. But I do think, I think it's accurate to look at the individual schools and sort of test those pressure points a little bit.
Yeah, we've just given McGivern, you know, our current enrollment, and so update again. And we think that's good. That's why, again, it's probably confusing if you look at the McGivern report like page three, under Rick Marcock. It was predicted in 17, in what was, we're calling error. I don't know if that's the right terminology. And then what was predicted in 19, and what the error was, so you can begin to see short, shorter range, longer range comparisons. Yeah.
Other questions or comments? All right.
Great.
We'll shift to master planning and visioning update.
So we've got Roberto here. We're a little bit over, overtime. Again, they have been by our side along the way, along with Bridget, Gary, Brian, and Patrick, Carsten. Lot of, lot of hours have been going on to, to try to help get out information. So we're gonna give you a little bit of an overview and an update. I think Bridget can add, Patrick can add, Carsten can add, Gary can add, Brian can add.
We need, we need a slide?
Yeah. You're gonna give us a brief update. So you can, can you do it right from there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's move out of the way.
Yeah, so, there's a lot, first of all, I'll see if I can try to get you guys back on track on your screen.
Oh, yeah.
In terms of time.
Richard, is this amped up to, on the speakers? Or was it helped to move closer?
It's fine, I think you... I think this is fine, right? Can you hear me?
Hello?
So tonight is really just kind of an update on where things are at. You know, a lot has happened since the last school board meeting, a month ago. It's, it's hard to believe that it's only been a month, but we've been working pretty diligently on developing the concept from, you know, the Concept 5, you know, work that, you know, very conceptual work that we had done on the September, for the September 4th meeting. So we'll go over the site plan, the floor plans, and we'll also just talk to you a little bit about what we're doing in terms of lifecycle cost analysis, and then next steps moving forward. So when we look at the site plan, what we're, you know, as we've discussed in the past, we are constructing a new middle school, high school, and our physical education athletic center on the, all on the east side of the site. This is, I can barely see it, but there's a dashed red outline here of the existing high school. There's a dashed red outline here of the existing middle school. We've got a new entrance coming into the site here with a bus drop-off directly in front of the building. These buses would turn and then come back out here. There'd be a traffic light. And there's a parent, separate, you know, entirely separate from that loop. Parents come in here, drop off, and then turn back out. We've got some parking that's just integrated around the site in different areas, trying to create a green space, basically a, a big band of green fields along this front area, fronting on Dorset Street. And so we've got relocated track and turf field, tennis courts, another tennis court, and a basketball court here. Some of these revisions or moves that we've made are a result of four days, four solid days of meetings with high school students and faculty, as well as middle school students and faculty. We had a really good turnout of students, and in particular, on, from both schools, which was really informative and, and was great to hear. So we've taken, you know, some feedback from those and are continuing to integrate some of the, the input that we've received. So, in any case, so we've got some parking. Some of these yellow areas here are just kind of placeholders for wetlands, gravel, locations where stormwater runoff will shed into. We are also anticipating we will have to have underground stormwater infiltration galleries as well, just because of the amount of stormwater infiltration needs that there are. So we can come back to the site, or if anybody has any questions about the site, I can take any if you, otherwise I'll, I'll keep going and then just speak up, you know, if you have any questions.
Quick question, Ed. That connection to the wellness center looks an awful lot like those breezeways that connect the various buildings at Burlington High School, and just doesn't seem like a good idea. In fact, they, I think they've been renamed Freezeways, because they're so cold.
Yeah.
Is that what that is? It's just a covered hallway?
Well, it's, first of all, the, I think the breezeways at the Burlington High School were built in the 60s.
Yeah.
And so today, you know, we would certainly insulate the walls and, and the windows and roof and everything, so it won't be a cold space. It'll be designed to, you know, to deal with the, either the sun or cold that's outside, so that it's a comfortable space when you're going through it. But the, one of the main things that we're trying to do, as you look at this, and I, and we'll get into it when I, when I show you the floor plan, is that we are trying to provide daylight into as many spaces, you know, around the entire building. So it's a very conscious effort that we are doing. So like, for example, this is a academic wing, this is an academic wing, and they're all in the east-west direction. And so what we're trying to do is take advantage of the southern light and northern light, because they are more manageable. You can, you can deal with providing shading devices on the southern side of windows, and the northern really is just a, a very even light, as opposed to east and western light, which you have the sunrise and the sunset, you have glare coming in. So, so a lot of the moves that we're making here are very much related to solar orientation and, and making sure we get enough natural light in. And the other thing that this does is allows us to have a clean separation from, with that athletic, athletic facility from the rest of the building, and I'll get into that in a minute. So this is an overview, just, you know, our first stab at taking a look at the massing of the building in relation to the different areas. So, you know, you can see the, these are three-story academic wings here and here. Most of the rest of the building is either two-story or single level. When you, so you can kinda see, this is just laid on top of the existing orthophoto. So this is the title middle school, and this is the high school over here. The existing track is underneath this area here. So the land drops off right about here, drops down, and we're taking advantage of that, that drop-off by putting the track, or the indoor athletic center there, so that when you come across and into this building, you're coming in at the upper level, and you'll be able to look down into the track that'll be at the lower level. The other thing that we're doing here is, one of our thoughts is that we've got a pretty good opportunity here to put solar panels on this roof here. So that's oriented, that's another advantage of orienting this building, this, in this direction, is we've got a nice, big roof area there for, potentially for putting solar panels. And then a clear-story light to let in some north light, you know, into the middle of that space. And meanwhile, trying to keep this space a little bit lower up against this other classroom wing. So this is the overall floor plan of the entire facility. We have the middle school entrance over here. The middle school extends to right about here. This is the shared kitchen and shared custodial maintenance boiler room area. And then the high school begins basically right here over. And then this is where the, the athletic center is. And so, and this is the, the high school entrance. So I can kind of walk you through this as an overview, and then we'll get into the specific buildings. So you enter here into the middle school. This is, this green area here is a dining commons. So this is basically the cafeteria portion for the middle school students. This is the cafeteria portion for the high school students. They, they'll serve the high school students on this side, serve the middle school students on this side. There'll be doors that separate the two schools. Then this is a middle school house, a middle school house, and middle school house, and then gym, administration on this level. And then at the high school level, the administration is here. This is the arts wing with art and band and chorus, black box, 70, 750-seat theater. And then over here, in this little kind of hinge area, we've got the STEM lab, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, which is just adjacent to the science and math wing. And so this kind of forms the connection between the science area and the art area. So we've got science, technology, engineering, math, adjacent to an art flex lab, adjacent to a wood shop or tech, wood, wood technology shop. And so this is offering opportunity for students to be exposed to a variety of materials that are, would be available to them, from taking some course in here and maybe collaboration among those teachers to come up with a project that can integrate multiple disciplines. And then down here, this is the other three-story academic wing with, you know, digital literacy and civic and, you know, social studies and, and world languages and so on. And then this is the upper level of the athletic center. We've got a movement studio and cardio weight room on this floor. You come in, and then there are bleachers here that would be able to seat the entire high school student body. There's about 1,100 seats, and that looks down into the indoor track and courts. So I kinda went over, this is the first floor of the middle school. I come, went over that a little bit. One thing I will note is that, you know, we've been, you know, thinking about future expansion. So in, in the design, we've made an effort to think about, okay, you know, if there is a point in time in the future where the schools would need, you know, would have increased enrollment, how do we deal with that? And so here's an opportunity to add on another house. The core spaces are sized so that, you know, they can accept that additional enrollment fairly easily. So moving up to the second floor, so these are these houses again, and again, these are clusters of classrooms that are a team. So this might be a Polaris team, this might be a Why Not team. And they surround this sort of extended learning space that allows, you know, students to come out and work on projects together. It could be a morning meeting space for the whole team. It kind of sets the tone for offering different opportunities for students to learn in different environments. There's also a couple small group rooms where students can go into and, to smaller rooms, or teachers to meet with students as a pull-out space. There's a teacher planning room there as well, where teachers can get together and talk and collaborate. There's a library media center on the second floor. This is kind of overlooking the entrance area, and then makes a connection here to art and a band in this wing. And then this is overlooking a dining commons below, and this is that hella upstairs. We've shown pictures in the past. So this would also allow for like an impromptu performance space for middle school students. And this is the, the upper level of the gym. It's about twice the size of the existing middle school gym, and it's got a walking track on the second level. And then, and then over here, we've got a time lab and TV studio. And then on the third floor, it's primarily, again, the, just that academic wing. Moving on to the high school, this is the first floor. I kinda went over this earlier, but it's, it's similar idea for each of these wings. We have an extended learning space, again, allowing for students from math and science to get together and collaborate. And as you can see, again, you know, just talking about the natural light, when you see the massing model and you see a big chunk here, you know, in reality is that, you know, there's a lot of natural light coming in here into this dining space, and all of these rooms on the outside all have natural light. Meanwhile, the auditor, or the theater space is, doesn't need natural light, and so we've tucked that into this interior space. But as you can see, we've, all of these spaces all have natural light. And then special education spaces are, are kind of sprinkled in and integrated into each of the academic wings with your inclusionary model. And then on the second floor, we have this business and career and big picture space. We've, we're combining each of those into a kind of a collaborative environment where they're kind of working together. They've got a kind of a, a really nice spot here near the front entrance to allow for community access pretty easily. They also have a nice connection to the media center, which is located at the knuckle between the two academic wings. And so this is nice, because, you know, you've got students that would be passing by that on a frequent basis, you know, and, and having easy access to the media center. And then that looks out onto, over to the athletic center and beyond. And then, and then this is the third floor. Again, this is similar situation where we've got the academic floor extending up three floors, and the library media center is on two levels. And the idea there is that, you know, that dining common space is, is really your kind of primary social area. The second floor where the media, the library starts is your kind of next level of kind of study, but semi-social gathering area. And then the third level is really for, you know, quiet study. And then the third level is really for, you know, quiet study and, and so it's a, this is something that really resonated well with quite a few of the students as well. You know, really kind of appreciated this effort to create these kind of varying spaces. And looking at the wellness center, which, you know, is really primarily a phys ed and athletic center and we're in the process of changing the name because it really fits as a, you know, phys ed and athletic center. That's really its primary function. And so down at this lower level, we have phys ed lockers and athletic lockers and team rooms, athletic trainers' room. Again, I, these are the bleachers here. This basketball court would be a hardwood basketball court, so this would be your primary competition court. And then the rest of the flooring in this area is all rubberized that can accept, you know, cleats and so forth for running, but can also be used for practice basketball games. And there would be, you know, net partitions that would come down and separate each of these courts and nets that would separate the track so that, you know, balls don't extend out onto the track and, and each of the games can happen simultaneously. And, and then there'll be access, community access down at this lower level as well as community access at this upper level here with a little concession ticket booth located Any questions on the buildings before we move on?
This is a minor and say, don't ask it. But as of right now, like when the high school has full assemblies, we all gather into the gym. Like what space is thought of as that gathering center for?
It's not a minor question. It's actually come up a number of times and, whoops. And so the idea is that the entire high school student body can be right here on these bleachers and be available for that assembly. So, and, and not only that, but this space can also be used for high school graduation and other events, you know, where, you know, maybe you want to have both the middle school and the high school in here and you can set up chairs and other, you know, portable bleachers and set them up in this space as well. So this slide talks about, you know, our goals here, which are to be LEED certified and, you know, there's a, I'm not expecting you to read all that text, but it's pointing to the various parts and components of the building that go into being a sustainable building. You know, a lot of times people just think, oh, it's photovoltaic panels and, you know, recycled materials. But it's really a lot more than that. You know, the, from, you know, picking out trees and vegetation that use, you know, less water, that require less maintenance to, you know, toilet fixtures and plumbing fixtures that use less water to, you know, highly efficient mechanical systems, ventilation systems, tuning the windows so that you have a certain insulated window on the north side of the site, of the, of the building versus the south and west side, you know, those are slightly different to, to deal with the solar heat gain. And, you know, to the types of light fixtures that we use and integrating daylight sensors into those lights so that if there's enough daylight coming into the space, those lights don't turn on. So there's a lot of different things and, you know, recycle, using materials that are recyclable, using materials that can be recycled at, and that can be, and using materials that, you know, are researched into which companies actually have like a cradle-to-cradle specification where, you know, they will recycle their own products. You know, all of those things go into and are part and parcel to a sustainable building. And, and so this is just meant to kind of show you that there's a lot of stuff that goes into that. One other piece like this, for example, this symbol here is representing geothermal wells, which is a process where it pulls up water from the ground and uses that to heat the building and then also, you know, that heat also gets pulled out of the building and pushed back into the ground and then turns into cooler water to cool the building. So right now, we are in the process, we're having our engineers do an evaluation on what is the life cycle cost analysis of pursuing that. So, you know, the baseline project is having a traditional, you know, gas-fired hot water boiler and water-cooled chiller plant. Of course, I mean, it's, it's not totally traditional in that, you know, these are super high-efficiency systems. I mean, you'd be surprised at the size of the boiler these days, you know, like if you look at the boilers from the 1960s, you know, they, they fill up to the size of this room. And today, a lot of these boilers are like the size of a refrigerator, you know? So it's, it, they are high-efficiency boilers. But option one, so that was the baseline. So option one is looking at using a geothermal system where we would use that to cool and heat the building with no fossil fuels at all. So that would be a net zero energy option. And then option two is kind of a hybrid of using some geothermal to cool the building but then offset that with, you know, a smaller number of boilers to provide kind of a somewhat redundant system, but it's using, you know, fossil fuels to a smaller extent. And, and there's pluses and minuses for each of these and so our engineers are evaluating that and they are planning to come in a couple of weeks and report to the working group their findings and the working group will then report out to you guys. So I just wanted to give you a little intro to that. So looking at the schedule, you know, here we are, right here. We've had a number of user group meetings with the middle school and high school students. We've had our community input night, which we actually had a really good turnout, I thought. And we broke out into sessions and got some good feedback. We presented some boards on the exterior appearance of different ideas that we, we've got for the building and asked people to put stickers, you know, red, yellow, and green as to, you know, which ones kind of they were drawn to and had an interest in pursuing, which ones didn't, you know, weren't so thrilled about. And so that's kind of giving us some input as to where we might be headed in terms of exterior appearance. So we've got another one of these community, community input nights coming up, that's on the 15th of October. So we really like to encourage as many people to come out to that as possible. And that's at seven o'clock on the 15th at the high school library, I believe. And, and then in November, you know, we'll be kind of wrapping up our initial design and sending it to the cost estimators on the 22nd of November. They'll need a few weeks to put costs together. The school district is hiring a separate construction management firm to put together a cost estimate. So we'll have two cost estimates, independent cost estimates to compare to one another. And so that'll all be happening in December and then reporting out to the school board. And then, you know, January, February, March is the community outreach piece, leading up to the bond vote. And then after that, we continue on with design. So, you know, we also want to let the school board and the public know that, you know, this isn't the last opportunity to provide some input into the design. There'll be continuing, you know, four or five months of design development. And then we go into construction documents and then out to bid in February of 21, 2021. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if I'm back on track or not, but.
Thanks for trying.
Any questions?
Is there anything planned that is similar to the building that is being built right now by the turf, like the bathrooms or something like for the new outdoor turf?
Yes. We are planning to have a facility, you know, basically very similar to that and we've been actually looking at seeing what we can actually remove and salvage and reinstall in a new restroom facility. So we are looking closely at that and, you know, there'll be a concession stand, storage out there for, you know, lawn equipment, you know, maintenance and so forth. We've also got another maintenance, you know, there's a number of, we actually just took the walkthrough today, just kind of, just to confirm all the different buildings. There are quite a few little outbuildings on the property. Housing, you know, a variety of things from outdoor track and athletic equipment to maintenance, lawnmowers and so forth. So we're, we got that all taken care of and, and we'll be integrating that into the site.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the site plan too? Because I just want to say one other thing about.
Yep.
The other thing Cole is if you look at where the, yeah, right there. It's, well, I mean, are the bleachers on the, they're on that side.
They're on the west side, yeah.
But we talked about, we're actually looking at adding just a small number of bleachers on this side for the visitor.
Yep.
Yep.
Let them look into the sun during.
Exactly.
Welcome to South Burlington.
But yeah, we would be looking at possibly putting in like a concession stand and toilet room facilities in around this area.
Probably also one that could serve tennis and then the, the north fields to the baseball and softball. Those fields actually, they look like baseball softball fields because you can see the diamond cutouts, which is uniquely American. If you're flying like around the world, you don't see those in other places. But those fields will be multi-use fields also, you know what I mean? So like you could play ultimate frisbee in those, you could play lacrosse, you could play a number of different activities.
Yep.
In those fields too. So we want to, whatever we have for outdoor restrooms or concessions, put it in a spot where yes, it's going to work for the stadium, but also it needs to work for all those other fields too.
We also have an outdoor here, area here, grassy area for middle school students and we heard a lot of input, different ideas on.
It's surprising how much playground equipment middle schoolers actually say they will use.
Another thing that came up, I, we know that like there's a lot of questions that we've been building for about outside, you know, outside spaces, you know, what, what could be available? And actually some of the small print, it's not in there, but, you know, could you have an outside classroom, some, you know?
Right.
Place to go outside and actually be in that environment. I mean, it's pretty, we're pretty fortunate in the back part of our, that property that there is some nice connected learning opportunities that can happen.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, you know, there's some power lines here that are kind of stopping us from building, a building out there, but there's a lot of opportunities to have those outdoor classrooms right along that, that back line there. You're right, David.
Does this configuration allow all of our teams to practice and play on the property versus kind of what they're doing now, whether going to Dorset Park or to the, to Central School or things like that?
I, I think some of that might depend on decisions that are made about whether this becomes a turf field or not.
Yeah, that's exactly right. If that's synthetic, then yes. I mean, we can, this isn't, this is one fewer baseball diamond than what we currently have. So that, that's the one loss. If those, if those fields are synthetic, that's like putting in four fields in terms of actually playable fields as opposed to so. And, you know, to be honest, I think that Dorset is a great place and, and our students don't have a problem getting up there for right after school practices, et cetera. So if you gave me a choice of having a practice start at five o'clock but on campus or right after school up at Dorset, we would, we would go to Dorset every time.
I just wondered.
And in terms of games.
Contained everybody, yeah.
We could cover games on campus because when baseball plays, JV's home, varsity's away, you know, so they don't play concurrently. So in terms of actual contests, we'd be fine. Practices, we'd probably still use Dorset for a few sports, not to mention all the sports we don't even know about yet.
And on the, Rob, on the buildings themselves, is there any level of detail that talks about ADA compliance of like where, where are the elevators? Are, are those at the level, are those are indicated yet?
Yep. So there's an elevator here and, you know, that's because this is kind of like the three-story wing. So you would come in the door here and the elevator's right there. And then here, same, same kind of thing, the elevator is right here at the, the knuckle of both of these wings. So this is, you know, the three-story wing primarily. So close, you know, fairly close access to the front door as well.
So those two allow access to every point in?
Yep. And they'll, and they'll, actually there'll be a lift or an elevator is, in here as well to get down that level, but yes, yep.
In terms of the amount of square footage that a student or community member could access without getting in an elevator, it's like exponentially greater than what we currently have. It's that whole first floor plus the phys ed and athletic center. You wouldn't have to get in an elevator to get into all of that or to go from high to middle. You wouldn't either.
Yeah, so you probably said this, there's, we got high school.
Monday, Tuesday.
User, user group meetings. And then we've got, that's Monday, Tuesday of next week. And then the following week, we've got middle school. Monday, Tuesday.
Yep.
So this is kind of the day twos of that and that has yielded a lot of good feedback, but also questions that we've been having to wrestle with as well.
I have to say, Dora Woodyer has been really responsive. I, I got feedback from a, a middle school teacher who was in our very last middle school day last week and I, I saw him in our civilian clothes at Rick Marcot and he was impressed that we took stuff from that last day, Dora Woodyer did, and then by the time we presented it, because he came to the community input session too, he's like, it was already incorporated by the time we saw the plans at the community input session. So, so there's been some positive feedback, not just from him, but from others about how responsive you guys are being to, to input we're getting.
Yeah.
But, but David's right. Some of these, you know, we had sort of thought about the, the overall vision of what we wanted to deliver educationally. The details though of, of who owns spaces and who doesn't own spaces and whether they need to or not need to. Some of those details are really kind of coming to the surface now that we're inviting, involving a wider group of faculty and administration and stuff. And so those are some, some challenging questions, but good ones to ask and good ones for all of us to think about too.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Move on to agenda item 10. This is executive limitations policy monitoring. This is worn for action. 3.2 accountability and evaluation of the superintendent. So the board has gone through a pretty rigorous process. Included in that is, was a performance evaluation for David, our superintendent, that focused on board communication, vision, leadership, strategy, management, communications, and state and federal regulations and compliance. And that is typical of a normal performance evaluation. And I'm happy to report that the board, I'll take a motion and we'll have some further discussion on this, but would like to extend a three-year agreement to David with one-year term specifically outlined. That would include a 3% salary increase. a 3% salary increase, and additional compensation including professional development, um, membership fees to professional organizations, long-term disability insurance, and a contribution of $5,000 to a 401K or 403B, um, that would go in effect, uh, as of, effective July 1 of this year, and, uh, terms to be negotiated for the second and third year in the future. So I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And just in terms of further discussion, and I'll open it up for the rest of the board, one, thank you for your service, as always, um, some of the goals that were discussed in, um, interview review that already occurred with David were as follows, and that was to continue to work with the director of learning, to definitively understand where district needs, um, fewer or more resources to deliver on its ends policies, and to provide clarity on the metrics which will be used to assess and improve student outcomes over the next five years. A second goal was to finalize recommendations from the 2016 resolutions on master planning and visioning, including one, having a schedule for sound mitigation in place for Chamberlain by the end of the year, along with a funding mechanism, or to have some other plan in place to make sure the children there are learning in a safe environment, and two, to implement a community outreach plan to ensure a bond, uh, getting a bond passed regarding middle and/or high school construction, or have a plan in place for a vote, um, by November 2020. A third goal was to navigate through the 180 Market Street process successfully, meaning that Rick Marcot Central School is an accessible, safe, and healthy learning environment during and after construction, including improved transparency with the board and students, parents, and staff. And lastly, to evaluate and report to the board on the status and effectiveness of the various initiatives going on in the district, in particular, to evaluate the impact of additional professional development that's gone on for the past two years, and determine necessity to continue that. So those were outlined in the performance evaluation and contributed to the recommendations contained herein. Is there, is there further discussion or comments?
I would just reiterate, Elizabeth, thanks for all the work that you do, um, both the things that are actually on the calendar and scheduled, and all the extra things, uh, and the extra effort that you put in, um, both here in the district, as well as statewide, and the input that you provide to some of these big, um, things that are going on in the state, uh, as education continues to evolve, so thank you for that hard work.
Yeah, I third that, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to say my own personal thanks as well, and, um, as an example, here we are, it's 9:00 PM at night, and you're still on company time, and, uh, that takes dedication, and we appreciate it very much, and South Burlington is, is better for it, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, um, do we lose Martin?
Do we have to take roll call? Or is...
Yes, we did lose Martin.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm looking for the phone.
I put him away, but no, he, he dropped off, he said he would need it to leave.
So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes, thank you, and we'll get this formalized.
Yeah, I mean, it's important for me to say thanks too, and it's not all about me, it's about the people that surround me, and, you know, from the staff, the teachers, you know, central office folks, operations, Gary's walking out, Anthony, um, and you too, because a lot of you have taken on a lot as well, but I certainly would be remiss also, we've got people right near me in my office, one sitting right over here, who's just, just working away, again, it's certainly a big team effort, so...
Well, thanks. All right, uh, we'll move on to agenda item 11, negotiations update, um, we took action earlier and have a tentative agreement through June 30th of 2020 with the SBEA, um, I think the current contract calls for, uh, actually notification for negotiating a successor agreement in the next couple of weeks, so we'll continue to work toward that, any other negotiations updates?
I think that like signing, I know that that has been, I know that was one of the things, we're hoping we've got a revision, or we've got a cleanup language to get.
Yes, I think there's a draft sitting with SBA representation right now, and we're waiting to make sure that meets with the tentative agreements that were, um, presented at mediation, so that will be the next step, is to have formal signature on that.
And in terms of the SBAA, Martin and I sat down with Pat and Mark last week for the second meeting, um, we each had some proposals that we put forward, uh, we're going to do some homework, and I assume it's going to be a couple of weeks, and Smarton's traveling before we get together again, so hopefully in three weeks. Exchange more proposals, yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on, other paper articles, I think...
So there should be one tomorrow, um, that I submitted last week, uh, regarding just the overall master planning and visioning, and really talking about concept five, which is the one that we're moving forward with, um, that was just the overview one, and I believe that isn't Martin on the hook, I think, or the next one is, uh, about educational, priorities for the master planning and visioning.
So, yeah, I will try to send out a reminder, but Delina, if I could ask you to do that as well, to Martin on that date, who's got plenty of lead time.
He's actually, he was watching, uh, live, um, when he was on, there was like a 10-second delay, but he was watching live.
All right, so Martin, I'm talking to you.
Hi, Martin.
You can't talk back.
Yeah. 10:31, which, uh, due date on, uh, the other paper article. Okay. That's streaming, right?
Right.
Okay, uh, setting the agenda for the October 16th regular meeting.
So we'll need to add, and you brought this up, there was actually a note that I had from Delina to remind you around adding the proxy vote for the VSA, um, so we'll have to, we'll add that in, you appropriately announced that.
I'm not sure if it's something to like add to the agenda, but just introducing the new junior rep.
Yes, yeah, let's do that. Anything else? All right, moving on.
Oh, the only other thing, and was it, was it in here, um, where, okay, it's in there, in consent agenda, the bids, um...
Oh, for the, for the 16th?
For the master planning and visioning, so there are some bids that are, there are P's out, and, and in fact, Elizabeth, you and I are supposed to sit down, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there's seven.
With the, with the, well, along with other people, with the two financial managers that are financial advisors that replied to that RFP, but, but Gary believes that by the 16th, public relations and pre-construction services, which is what Roberto, uh, referred to when he said that a construction company would be hired to, to do an assessment of the costs of the project, um, so the, the bids for that should be in, and so, so that would actually be a reasonably long discussion probably, because there'll be enough of them, but anyway, it's in there, so, sorry.
Yep, no, thanks for highlighting.
Where do you see that?
Back page.
That page is under the consent agenda, but those, those things are...
Do we know that those might not require action?
I think they all would, because they're over the 15,000.
That's what I was, yeah, I was kind of surprised they were in consent agenda, yeah.
If they aren't, then, I, I don't, I mean, we suspect.
So we'll just have to determine where those go appropriately then, okay?
Right now, we, we're just, they need to be listed, you know?
All right, future agenda items, I think most of those have been identified, where they will be discussed.
Yeah, good work on getting that done, Joy and Godak and Board around getting that list done.
Look how much we got done, and we were out of here fast without you here, too.
I know, pressure.
I don't want to say anything.
Yeah, I get it, I've heard it already, several times, not from you guys, but from others.
All right, agenda item 15, consider the minutes of the September 16th meeting. That was a negotiation subcommittee. Seeing no comments or changes, those are approved, September 18th, it's a regular meeting?
Yeah, halfway down the first page, it should be PM instead of AM after 6:55.
Yeah.
We keep bad hours, we're not that bad.
We were there a really long time.
Okay, with that change, seeing no other changes, those are approved, the September 24th meeting?
Uh, same kind of issue, halfway down, it says Bridget made a motion to enter executive session at 9:04, but this is actually an afternoon, I believe.
Yeah, that was the 2:30, it should be 2:30 PM.
Yeah.
So that should be 2:30 on that executive session motion?
Yep.
All right, seeing no other changes, with that change, those are approved, and September 25th. This was a special meeting, we don't, we don't have a quorum of the board here, did we just warn it as such?
This was, we did warn it.
We warned it in case people wanted to come, uh, but it just ended up being Brian and me.
Okay, so we'll keep it, we'll keep it warned, because it was, so, any other changes on that?
Yep.
Those are approved, and account table orders number 12 and 13, any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.